All right, the hour of seven has struck. Please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag. And Tom will join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call of the board, please.
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Drapka?
Present in the conference room.
Trustee Looper?
Present.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Present.
Supervisor Wilt?
Present.
Let the record note, clerk was in attendance.
For any of the guests tonight, if you would make sure that you've signed in so we know that you're here. And the minutes will reflect it. Okay. Before we go to the minutes on our agenda, we have some visitors here and I don't want to keep them all night, especially since we have some youthful attendees here tonight. So if you would not mind, we can move up the presentation. Yeah. You have an early bedtime. So we have, we'll do the check presentation right after the minutes, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Okay. But in the meantime, we have minutes from the September 12th meeting in your packets. What is your pleasure?
I made a motion to approve the minutes. But I have a question. Land on the visitors. Is, on the first visitor, is her name Leith? Or should that be Faith? Or was it hard to read?
It was hard to read.
It's Leith.
Oh, it is Leith?
Oh. That is right. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
What a beautiful name. I just didn't, never heard it before.
Okay. Very good. I have a motion to accept the minutes of the September 12th meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Trustee Looper?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach? Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
If you had one question. Was the chili award winning?
I'm sorry?
We were robbed. The chili and the cook-off?
We did not win. However, our chili was very popular because we were right next to a very spicy chili and people kind of came and said, "Is it real spicy?" And when we said, "Not really", and they tasted it and went, "Oh, that's good."
Well, I never win.
Oh, well.
Okay, that's one.
Good. Well, then, since we agreed to make it easier on our attendees here tonight, I would like to make a presentation first to an organization who has not yet received their check. And I have a very negotiable check before me for the Prairie Trail Federation. And this is a grant of $2,000. And can I have the Indian Guides, Princesses and Trailblazers representatives? Come on up here. Good luck on all your endeavors.
Thank you for supporting the project.
You're very welcome. There's your regular check. And then we have a very large check for a little photo. Does anybody have a camera with? Because now I have my phone camera. And anyone who would like to be part of this photo, please come along because this is one big check.
Watch out, honey.
Look out.
We're going to bring it up here.
Yes, we have to. I just wanted to get it over the table first. Okay.
How'd you guys come?
Not too much.
So high.
I got a little trouble.
Too high, too high.
Should we get out there? Maybe push it a little.
Little woman.
Wait. I missed her coming. Sorry.
Now, this is a first-time grant, so we're very happy to help you guys in your endeavors.
Very nice.
That's what we need.
And do you want this as separate things or can you just do it for the total grant? Is that all right?
Where'd the check go?
Wait, where's?
Here, I have it. Have a sign.
Oh, get out of there.
Yeah, we gotta do it one more. We're gonna get out.
This is Martin Beckman.
Oh. It's been sitting here for a couple of days, so let me get the, there's a little spray bottle in there. And would somebody look up the grants? The total amount for the organization?
$2,500 and $800. That website is awesome. Jen, everybody's gonna have to group out, I think.
Okay, so what was the total?
$3,300.
$3,300.
That's the total amount, right?
Yeah.
And it goes to...
Bulldog Wrestling.
Bulldog Wrestling.
A what? Fish shield?
Junior Bulldog Wrestling. Technically, it's Junior Bulldog Wrestling.
Junior Bulldog Wrestling?
Yeah. Do you need it or no?
No. And again, a first-time grant.
And Jen, I think Vera helped get that. The bulldog, did you get that?
Yeah.
Go ahead and get that. Oh, yeah.
Didn't say anything to me that. My question was, did we put credit on the meeting?
It should be. We were saying that, yeah.
I want that sent. That's what I'm doing.
Oh, okay. We'll work it out. We need to have two of these. Speed up the process.
Yeah, that's... No, we don't want two of them. Okay.
All right.
All right, where are you going? Wasn't training for a while. Remember training? Should we go wrestling? No, I guess not. They actually come to the...
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, we have a check. The three of them. Yeah, yeah, you have a check. You have a check.
Showing nice wrestling shirts.
Is that correct?
Okay. Because they're being pumped for...
Come on in, I like...
One, two, three.
All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Good luck. Okay. So now, we'll go on to communications. Not sure if there was anything?
Uh, there's one communication. The Friends of the Library sent in a letter and they said that they made a donation to the...
Oh, they were making a donation to the food pantry?
Food pantry for $224. And thank you for their continued support.
Okay. Thank you. And there's no further communications?
Nothing.
Okay. Then, are there any visitors remarks? Come on up. Identify yourselves. Please identify yourselves. Yes, you may speak together or alone, however you sound.
My name's Jennifer Fournier. I live at 305 Maplewood in Riverside.
And my name's Akiri Abud, 21 North Herbert Road, Riverside.
And we are here on behalf of the Riverside Community Garden asking for your support. So I have, the Riverside Community Garden is a project with a lot of community support. And we've had drawings done of what the aesthetic and the plan of the garden could be. And this is a garden that would be for township residents, old and young, for them to come together, for education to take place around gardening, around sustainable agriculture. It supports the pollinators in our community, so the bees and the butterflies that are so important. It reinforces, again, sustainability, which, you know, our township and Riverside in particular is all about. And it brings the community together in a very positive manner. Additionally, it could support the food pantry with fresh produce.
And that's kind of why I'm here today. I've, as part of the planning committee for this community garden, I volunteered to be kind of like the food pantry liaison. I've already had a long conversation with Supervisor Wilt about how we might work that out. You can see in your drawings that the intent is to have beds in the back that are rented out for a feet of whoever would like to plant there. But then we also have a good number of community beds. The idea behind those community beds, that would be kind of perennial things like, there's a lot of berries in there. There's also some trees that count as community trees, so fruit-bearing trees, like apple trees. And we would also, our intent right now is to dedicate one or two beds as purely for the food pantry as well, growing whatever the food pantry needs, tomatoes, lettuce, whatever that would be. And we would provide volunteers, myself and who else, whoever else I can recruit, to harvest then that produce weekly during the growing season and bring it to the food pantry.
Yeah. We've actually had over 50 volunteers offering their support for building, maintaining, renting space, people who really want to be involved in this type of project in our community. We've also had a lot of support from businesses, so in-kind donations of over $3,000, putting, you know, lumber and plants and things of that nature. The Eagle Scouts have offered their support in building the beds as a way for their projects to engage the community. And so, the location, we're talking to Parks and Recreation, is Patriots Park. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's on the north end of Riverside where 26th Street is. So kind of like by the Costco, but on this side of Riverside. It's tucked away. There are fire hydrants that get supplies, water. So they're doing due diligence and they're looking for your financial support and support of us in this project to proceed. So we are here to ask for your financial support, which we would use to get the garden up and running and also to provide scholarships for beds for people in the community who would want to have a bed, but maybe they're not financially able to do that. We would support them in doing that. And basically, make this a reality for our community.
Okay. So we do, we do grants on a quarterly basis. Next month is our grant time. And this is a wonderful drawing, but there's a form on our website or you can get it in the office to fill out and give us as much written information for us to digest as possible as well. Are there other questions at this time since we do have some very active people on the committee here?
How much do you want me to pay?
$5,000 would be ideal. That would leave us with about $3,000 to $4,000, which we would do fundraising efforts to support. And that would get it up and running for the first year. If there was an annual support amount, that would be awesome as well because, you know, as you know, water is expensive. So, yeah, as much as you are able to lend support, we would back that through community donations.
When you're filling out your grant request, make sure you break down that $5,000 that you want exactly with...
What it goes to?
Right.
Okay.
And that would, that would help us immensely.
Okay.
And since you've already been fundraising list, you know how much there is and what the full project is expected to cost. So as much as we, as much information as we can get, especially on new grants, so much the better.
Okay. So your timing is, so if we were to get it in like the next week, is there a review process?
On the 21st.
We, actually, next month, we meet a week later than this month. So it won't, our meeting won't be until the 21st of November. We would ask that you get that in at least a week in advance, preferably farther. But, you know, if you could get it into us by like the first week in November, that would be excellent. And we would be able to distribute it to all the trustees for their review and so they could prepare any other questions that might come up next month.
It looks really cool.
Who's gonna do all this work? Are you enjoying the morning now? Are you gonna have mounted beds? Are these beds gonna be mounted?
Those are raised beds, yeah.
Raised beds? Okay.
That's the idea. And we should add, I mean, that's a concept of what this garden might look like ideally, right?
Exactly.
Depending on our funding, depending on the space that we get from the village, we will alter those plans accordingly.
Isn't that park a dog park right now?
There are no dog parks, actually.
There is not? What area?
It's the children's park area. And then the Riverside Juniors used to have a garden bed of flowers that they used to have there. And I guess part of it is just open land that the neighbors in the area have mowed. It's highly unutilized land.
It's kind of like a long stretch of land. And in the middle, there's a children's playground. And then there's longer stretches of grassy land on either side.
Are there bricks there that people bought a few years ago? To, and those bricks were to turn that park into like a children's playground and stuff?
I believe it funded the children's play structure, yeah.
At what stage are you with, with the village in terms of, I mean...
The village handed it over to Parks and Rec. They are figuring out the logistics of it. They have a lot of questions. And one of their big questions is, are you able to get support from the township? So we're kind of caught in this cat and mouse game.
If they did commit, would it be a one-year, three-year, five? We'd hope to have this go on for a long time. So, I mean, did they give you the land? Is there a risk that they'll take it away a year or two?
No. We were previously looking at some private land and that was the concern. This would not be the concern with the Park District. It's also worth noting that the Garden Club of Riverside is going to be celebrating their 100th year. So, you know, there is a community commitment to gardening that's really special in our community. So seeing the support that it could last 100 years, I think speaks to how long this could last as well.
We have generated...
The connection with the food pantry is a big appeal to me because, I mean, we've talked and I really want to reinvigorate the food pantry in town. And I think this would go hand in hand with that. So maybe if you could outline that partnership a little bit more? The grant application, that'd be great.
We definitely will. And, you know, we have already kind of named me to be the coordinator for that aspect. I do have some experience working with other local food pantries as well. Yeah. We'll definitely do that.
Very good. Oh, go ahead.
I see you have a grill and picnic area.
Again, this was like a shoot-for-the-dreams kind of plan. It would be totally subjective, too. I don't think grilling would be, Parks and Rec would not approve of that. So the final plan, they would have to agree on.
There's no picnicking in Riverside, yeah.
That's true. Definitely not any open fire, so I don't see that too far.
What are sun chokes?
It's like artichoke.
It's like an artichoke. It's a root vegetable. Yes.
They're kind of the squashed things, aren't they? They're kind of, is that what I'm thinking of?
I've never grown them.
Yeah? Okay.
It's like a small artichoke, kind of.
So if it's like, I see one section you're gonna have herbs and stuff. Is that for anybody to go and pick or...
So those are the community beds that I was talking about. So where you see the herbs, that would be a community bed. And those beds in the front, so you see the sun chokes, but then also a lot of berries, as well as those fruit trees. That, the idea is that those would be the community beds, community trees. Really, anybody in the community would be welcome to go there and pick from those beds. And then the plan right now is that on a weekly basis, I or another volunteer would go and harvest from those beds, whatever is ripe, and bring it to the food pantry. As well as, we want to open up donations from the members who rent beds toward the back that if they have any extra produce that they would like to give to the food pantry, our volunteers will go and collect that as well. And as need be with the food pantry, we would be willing to dedicate a couple of beds exclusively for the food pantry as well.
So these beds in the back, people from the community are gonna rent them?
Yes.
And how much?
That is the big question.
They're talking around, so it'll probably be around $30. So around $25 to $30 a week.
A season?
Mm-hmm. Very inexpensive.
And why wouldn't they be growing this in their own yard?
There's a lot of people who live in apartments who just don't have yards. And, you know, this especially meets the needs of everyone in the community.
Or sun. I can grow vegetables. I'm all shaded.
Do you foresee any problem with vandals because of the location where they're on 26th Street, close to Castro?
There is quite a high fence between the park and 26th Street. So I would say no.
It's pretty hidden, too.
Yeah. I think our largest vandals would probably be animals, you know.
Oh, yeah, right. Sure, I was gonna say that, yes.
Other questions? In your grant application, if you foresee certain labor being done by volunteers and some having to be hired out, you know, if you can break that down somewhat so that we know where your costs might lie.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for your...
Thank you.
And then please come back when, in November, if you can, to address it as well. Thank you. I don't see any other visitors here, so I presume we can move along. So now we have the supervisor's report. I was busy with general and emergency assistance this month. There were a lot of new inquiries. And I'm very pleased to report that tonight, I made a final grant to someone who was on a flat grant and was job hunting and found the job. And we always allow a couple of months beyond. And she's on her feet. And I gave her a last check and, you know.
Very, very nice.
Yeah. But I've also had some emergency requests and people don't follow through as much as you would think they would when they need money. I also just handed you this evening a couple of very brief policy notices. These are just for the record. I control how these funds are distributed, but just so that it's in the record as to where we are. The general assistance flat grant, I'm not looking to it. I'm not increasing at this point. But the emergency grants, the emergency assistance had been, prior supervisors had not changed it for many, many years and it was still at a $300, $300 limit. This is only allowed once a year. If we're giving flat grants in the, to the tune of $3,600 a year potentially, I think that an emergency situation where people are threatened with utility cutoffs, eviction, things like that, really warrants more. And I've been trying to monitor what the requests or what the needs have been. And $1,500 should be more than generous. I won't give $1,500. In the case of emergency funds, we definitely pay it to whoever the vendor is. So if it's a utility, I contact the utility where there's already a, either a cutoff notice or it's already been cut off. I contact them. The individual usually has to verify that it's okay to talk to me. I talk to them about what will bring them even, what will get the service reconnected or avoid the cut, the termination of service. And that's, you know, when people get into that situation, I either have that they're a couple of months behind in rent or they owe months of electricity or water or gas. And it's, these are always situations that are shelter, health, and life-threatening. So I'm just reporting to you, like I said, I don't, I'm not looking for a vote or permission. I'm just reading into the record that as of this date, the maximum amount that can be paid for emergency assistance is $1,500 and shall be available normal, no more than one time in any 12-month period. And also, as of this date, the general assistance flat grant is in the amount of $300 per month. And there's no change in that. I also had hoped tonight to basically adopt the new manual for general assistance and emergency assistance. But although they have told me it's ready and I ordered it right away, it hasn't arrived yet. So until I take a look at it at the next meeting, I'll probably read that similarly into the record. It's just a matter of that, that's the manual that I'll follow. That's for your information.
Vera?
Yes.
How many months can they get general assistance?
General assistance, there's really no cutoff on it as long as they comply. I've been, I've been working really hard with people because in most cases, they, what it is, is they're job hunting or they have applied for some other kind of assistance like SSI, Social Security Disability Income, or something on that order, and it hasn't come through yet. So on those cases, it tends to be somewhat temporary. I just dealt with someone today who, who is waiting for, actually, Veterans Administration disability. And I wasn't, I was able to, you know, he didn't qualify actually for general assistance because he's actually working for the VA and is really working hard to get on his feet. But that's one of those situations of falling behind in rent and got a five-day notice. So we need to get him straight so that he's not homeless on top of everything else. So that's temporary. But in some cases, you know, it's a temporary situation and in some cases, it's almost permanent. I have only one person right now who seems to really be struggling to find a job. Some of it is ageism, I would say. Some of it is that that person's been away from the kind of job that they had done for a long time and were trained for. So now their skills are not interesting to people in that field. So this person is really trying retail and waitressing and everything else, but has been very, very hard in finding a job. So, that one may be a long-term one. But I have this one case that got the last check. I have another one who is just about to go full-time on a job. And so, there will only be about two more checks. So, I've really worked with people to try to look at other avenues for jobs and be supportive of that. So, uh, and that individual had already been on general assistance for a number of months when, um, you know, when I came into the position. So, I'm trying to work people out of it, but there is no limit.
Okay. Okay.
Um, we also, just so you know, when people have been coming into the food pantry or on general assist...On general assistance, I have that information about the, um, if there's any children in the household so that when we prepare for the holiday meals, we had talked about possibly having some kinds of gifts. So, we want to make sure they're age-appropriate at that point. Um, I did attend a food pantry summit sponsored by Schaumburg Township last Friday. When you hear about some of the food pantries that are out there, you realize just how small we are in comparison. In most of their cases, they have enough space or they serve enough of a population so they allow people to actually shop in their food pantry. There...I can't see that ever happening unless we give up one of the rooms that's currently used for public use. Um, I got the opportunity to tour Schaumburg Township's food pantry and see how they actually operate. But I did get some, uh, good ideas, learned a few best practices, learned about some cautionary tales to look out for. For example, one of the speakers talked about how they've had to, um, do some damage control. And in their case, they've had to actually strike through the barcode on canned goods because people were recognizing a store that it came from that didn't look for a receipt and they were returning the canned goods for cash.
Oh.
Yeah. So, I...It's something that would have never occurred to me.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
That...
Interesting. Interesting how people play the system. But I...I also got some ideas for resources. Um, they...There was some talk about how people cooperate with farmers' markets, including, uh, one thing was some of them have good relationships with the vendors at farmers' markets. And at the end of the day, they don't really want to take their goods away. So, they'll leave it with the food pantry, in some cases with a donation, in some cases greatly reduced prices. So, that's a possibility we can investigate with some of the vendors as well. And I also learned that one of the well-known grocery chains actually has a program where, you know, when they...when they collect for charity at the register, they actually turn that into their deli department. And those...Some of those prepared meals that you could buy, they actually prepare smaller versions and freeze them and then donate them to food pantries for heat-and-serve opportunities for, for example, senior citizens who aren't going to be baking a whole turkey or, uh, may not even know how to prepare such a meal. So, it's a fully-prepared meal that...that comes packaged and frozen and they just...It's not like a TV dinner. It's better than that. But for a couple or, you know, smaller family units. So, I am going to check. We do have one of those grocers in our community. And I'm going to see if that's something that this store will do.
That's great.
That's wonderful.
I...I was shocked. And it was somebody from a very big, uh, and well-established food supply organization that said, "Oh, you know, we had an opportunity to do like a round robin." They...They kind of called it, uh, like speed dating, you know? So, you went around the room and you met with everybody individually and were able to share some, um, best practices. So, it was actually, I...I thought, "What are they gonna do all day at a food pantry summit?" But it was interesting. They...There were also some ideas that even with pre-packing the, uh, bags as we do, um, there were suggestions of healthy, uh, recipes on how to prepare the things that they get in there. And, you know, packaging things as a unit. So, you know, I'm hoping to...to get some ideas out there and implemented. Uh, purchased the dry erase check, so we've got our first opportunity to utilize that. And, um, so, I'm glad that we had a couple of organizations that were first-time grantees so that both they can utilize that as a catalyst for their publicity. And for our next issue, we'll have something for the newsletter as well. Fran is, um, at the North Riverside Neighborhood Services meeting tonight. So, if you're hoping for a report from her, she's there representing the township and telling the folks there about some of the, uh, services that we provide. And I want to forewarn you that next month's meeting is probably going to be pretty long because we do have grants on the agenda. And we also have the potential of residents attending for the discussion of building use. And we had already had to postpone the auditor coming because he couldn't come this month. And also, uh, the Riverside Cable Network was also going to come to answer questions. So, just be prepared for a pretty jam-packed meeting next month.
Marathon session.
Marathon session, unless you want to, you know, create a special session for grants or something like that.
That's what I'm wondering. Do we want to do that?
It kind of depends if we're gonna get a lot of requests for grants, too. But we, you know, it's an opportunity. We could...I could keep you posted on what else is coming up. I don't know if a lot of people are going to show up for the discussion of the building use or not. You know, it's hard to tell. But with a newsletter that's going to be a little bit more eye-catching, maybe somebody will actually notice and show up.
The television question, um, runs out in December, so we can't push that off too long.
Right, right. And I think that people kind of want to get the deal for the audit and the third deals. We should be doing differently. So, I don't really want to postpone any of those. Neither of those, um, representatives was able to come tonight. So, that's why we put it off to November.
Well, it is what it is, right? I have...I do have a question about this garden. Um, I didn't want to ask them because I...I was...They said that they had talked to you beforehand. So, uh, I guess I'm a little confused as to the reasoning for the whole project is on hold because the park and recreation told them that funding...They have to...She said that they...What was that?
As I understand it, the Parks and Recreation doesn't want to commit to the use of the land until they know that the...the group is going to be able to get enough together to get this started. This, as she said, and I made some suggestions even when we met before. I said, "You know, these are very nice things, but I don't know if this is intended for the food pantry." I don't know if sun chokes and asparagus are going to be the most utilized vegetables for a food pantry. So, you may want to consider some little bit more familiar vegetables, but...
This drawing appears to me to be the standard. Here's what a garden should look like.
What a community garden should look like, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Every...
So, we've already talked about the...Don't...Don't hang too much on what specifically is said that it will be planted here. I also think that a lot of this would get started on a small scale and as they raise more funds because people find it attractive, it would... You know, this is not going to be the fini...the immediate finished product. It's going to be a work in progress to get to this point.
No, I was just a little confused as to why she said that it was determined on us or the park district was on hold. And I was like, "Well, I didn't..."I was wanting to...
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of they were...She did approach me and we discussed what, uh, what she had hoped to do. And, you know, we talked about the practicality. I showed her what kind of space we do have to house produce for, you know, and what the potential was. And we talked about the practicality of how...how often she thought she could deliver something to us and how quickly, you know, because I said, "It would have to...We'd have to play it by ear." We don't know when people come in. We...People come in sometimes every day. Sometimes we get half a dozen, uh, eight people in one day. And the next two days, we may get nobody. And then we'll get one or two or three over a course of days. It's...It's very erratic as to when people actually come.
I think if they start understanding that there is fresh produce, that they're willing to have a more regular attendance.
Absolutely, right, right. And a lot of it depends on when did they come last? Because then they have to wait a month before they can come again. So, that's part of the problem as well, which is something we could also consider. I mean, we might be able to say they can come a second time on a produce day. You know, if...If they got their two bags and on top of it, we can notify them when there's fresh produce. See if you want to stop in for something. I mean, you know, nothing is carved in stone. But, uh, in terms of that timing, yeah. I...We had not discussed that and I didn't know because when we talked, the...the location was intended in a different place than it is now. So, it's been, I don't know, six weeks or so since she was in, I think, so... So, I don't know, um, how that's going to work out, but that is the reason for the delay. And, you know, it's all a conceptual thing. If we...If they give us a good enough application, we can pledge the grant. And then it sounds like if they get adequate money to get going, then the park district is more likely to commit to that.
And we can always term the word, the grant, saying, "We will grant you this money if..."
You have the space to do that.
We're not just gonna write them a check and then they don't get in.
But by the same token, I don't want them caught in this whole game back and forth. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions for me? Then how about any trustees' reports?
A couple. Um, speaking of food pantry, um, I would like to move forward and start, uh, looking for some community volunteers. This moment, obviously, you know, how the big donation we had, Supervisor Wilt has a nutritionist friend. I'd like to move forward, maybe form a committee of people to start looking at how we can re-energize it. Do I need a...
Re-energize what?
The food pantry and the outreach and, uh, coming together with the, uh, tischers and, um...
Riverside people.
For fresh pan...produce in the off-seasons, working with the farmers' markets. I mean, there seems to be a lot of buzz around this topic. And I'd kind of just like to explore it a little deeper and have...have the committee or people come to us and say, "Here's the option." Instead of us sitting up here during meetings debating all this stuff, I think we can have a lot of the groundwork done and then just come to us for the decision part of things.
So, what's your motion?
I don't know. I move that we form a food pantry committee from three to six members and we start interviewing.
I don't even know if there's a motion needed.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the same thing.
We can just reach out to people and see if we can start having some informal discussions.
I mean, that's something that they're gonna... There's no money involved as of yet. So, until there's money involved, we really don't need a motion, I don't think. Have at it.
It'd be a mixed... There should be a trustee on there plus the community.
Right.
Be the trustee.
Right, well, he...That's just it. I mean, we had designated those, kind of those areas that we would all look at. And Tom was...was volunteering way up front to be part of the food pantry.
That brings me to my next, uh, report. And I met with President Smetana over at RBHS, um, talking about different ways that the township and the, uh, school district can work together, partnerships. I mean, in the mental health board report coming up, partnerships are really a strong recommendation. And I really am a firm believer in forming as many partnerships as we can. Um, and she first off said, "Maybe you have all these kids on supplemental food programs, but we know there's six kids that don't qualify and they're still hungry, so we'll send that to your food pantry." Um, the very first thing she said was the grant they get from the mental health board has been extremely helpful. Uh, and they...they love that kind of direct assistance. And would, um, are talking among themselves. They're gonna come back to us to figure out, uh, some needs that they might have to see if there's services that we have that could match up with them. It's just preliminary conversations at this point, kind of exploring, you know, what they do, what we do. And if there's any overlap, maybe we can help them and they can help us. Um, I think trustee Dropka had, um, indicated he would be interested in sitting in on some of those meetings. Um, that's kind of child services, but I had the connection, so I figured I'd start that conversation.
Very good. Are we gonna make sure that the kids are from Riverside Township?
Of course.
That's something that we can do. I mean, they...We...I can give them our boarders.
Yeah.
And if they know that there's families in need that may not know that there's other opportunities. It's more of a referral matter than anything. It wouldn't be like they ask, uh, the school asks us for something for them. It's more a matter of their social workers are able to connect with the families and say, "Look, there's some...There's some additional assistance over there you might want to look at."
Okay.
It would just be, again, the partnership of spreading our message farther than we are able as our own board here. You know, the high school has been tested. You know, they...Certain organizations know that there's people in need and then we have the services. So, it's just creating those connections.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Uh, trustee Hallenbach, do you have anything?
Well, the mental health board, uh, you...Supervisor Wilt was very, uh, nice in sending that PDF of the survey. Uh, the survey is going to be voted on on the eighteenth of October to be finalized. If you have any questions or concerns or some recommendations, please email them to me so I can present them to the board. You have a little over a week to do that. Uh, I think the survey, uh, was very well done. And we're looking forward to implementing some of the programs, uh, going forward. Uh, we also, uh, had our first meeting back from the summer break. Uh, it went very well. RB is already very busy with her counselor. The counselor is there three times a week. I believe it's, um, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. She also gives us a briefing. We get a briefing every month, but she comes to one of our meetings, which is usually in April, to give us an overview. And I...I told her the last time at the meeting, I said, "Maybe you would like... The school needs something. You need something. Let's look at that. Give us a grant request, a discretionary grant request. Maybe we can do something." So, I was told by the representative, uh, from the organization that she's with that she is working very diligently on that and should happen in the next couple of weeks.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a couple of things. One, I'd like to congratulate the mental health board on a good job. I had a lot of questions before and the board answered a lot of them. Um, that's not something I think we could have done at the board, so I'm really happy that that structure's in place. The one question, issue, concern I have coming up is Riverside is going to, uh, potentially approve gambling in town, uh, which means our entire district would then have legalized gambling. And I foresee us having an increase in expense to help counsel gambling issues and gambling problems. And I'm concerned that the villages making these decisions are gonna, um, impose a cost that we have not experienced before. And I don't know. We'd have to talk to the lawyers. But I think I would like to enter into some kind of intergovernmental agreement where the fees that they are, um, getting from legalizing gambling would help us offset the cost of treating gambling addiction problems created therefore.
I...I can help you with that question because we have brought that up. Um, the state, their percentage, they get a higher percentage of their gambling fee. The state is supposed to provide counseling for people that, you know, need, have a gambling addiction. Um, do they have it? My guess is no. But that is their responsibility, um, from what we understood. So, I...I don't know if we would even need, uh, intergovernmental agreement on that. I really don't think at this time that that's going to be a problem, um, being that, uh, we're...we're a smaller town. Um, and the state is supposed to take care of that. That's the state's responsibility. But we do have, uh, we have an addiction person, you know, an organization. And, uh, I...I will ask that to that. I'm offline about if they have anything like that from...from anything, and I can let you know.
That'd be great.
Okay.
So, I have...I have a question on that note, though. Uh, does the state supply the...the local governments, then, with money to run a addiction thing or no?
No.
They are in charge of it.
They're in charge of it. Now, if you look to see if they have anything for trustee Dropka, I can't find it. Nobody on our board could find it. So, my guess is, is that it's non-existent.
They're using the money for something else.
Absolutely.
They do advertise with the numbers if you have a problem while they advertise the casinos, right?
That's right.
That's about it. That's about it. Is, one, clarify for me what you said about checking with those that you're in touch with. Is any of the agencies, do any of the agencies that you deal with already deal with that kind of addiction?
I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
They deal with addiction, but I'm not sure if it's...
If gambling is one of them.
Gambling is one of them. And let's keep in mind with the seven oh eight boards, we're in charge of mental health. And so, I don't know if a gambling addiction would fall under our jurisdiction. So, that's something that I can bring up. And I'll send you an email and we can bring it up at the next meeting, though.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
I just see a potential liability for us to have the expense coming out where we might not proceed.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have something locally, too, to address something, especially if the state isn't doing anything. You know what I mean?
I agree with that to a certain extent, but again, we're governed. I have to make sure that we follow that or we lose our accreditation. We don't want that.
Trustee Dropka, do you have anything? And Trustee Clark?
The seniors met. First Monday of October, and we played games on that day. And so, the next two meetings, we kinda have an annual pizza party in November. And then we have a holiday party in December. They both will be at the Riverside Health Club.
And what are the dates on those?
I don't have the dates yet, but I can get them to you, 'cause you're all invited to both parties.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I was, I was kind of disappointed that the flu shots didn't get more takers.
Yeah. What the guy from August told me was that most people had already had them and that next year we should do this in September.
Okay.
So, I...
Good to know. Let's, yeah, let's mark that.
He said that there was a big...
Rush.
There was some TV program that said that the flu is really gonna be bad this year. You know, get your shoot flu shot early. So, he said people rushed after that was on TV to get their flu shot.
Okay.
So, we'll not go do that in September next year.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Old business, there's nothing really new on the town hall room rental policy. I just wanna keep it in front of us. If you have any suggestions, I did not have a chance this month to work on the project much, but I will be addressing that now because we're working more on the, all the new people who were inquiring about services. I was putting together the service list for the meeting that Fran is attending tonight and also in preparation with the newsletter and such, so.
So, I have a question about the policy, though. In preparation for next month, are we going to have some kind of a draft? Do you want suggestions coming to you? I mean, how do you wanna...
I welcome your suggestions, because I will be working within the next couple of weeks on a draft so that I can give you something to look at before we actually come to a full discussion.
So, you want suggestions?
Yes, if you have, yes, any suggestions you might have where you think, you know, there should be a certain way of managing it or whatever. Trustee Lupfer and I had a conversation earlier today that if we have a committee that comes out of even this discussion of interested citizens, some of them might help a great deal with the promotion of it. We might find some marketing type people. And, you know, it wouldn't all fall upon staff and the board. Okay? And then you have a draft of the newsletter. I did catch one error that was probably mine. On the page four, in the box, in the second and last line, I've got too many propositions there and ending on a proposition. So, it should say, "To which the township board may set a time limit." Period. No on after that for individual citizens.
This is wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, it's a great job.
But I understand that this isn't gonna be eight and a half by eleven, or how is this?
Yeah, well, the, the whole sheet... So, this is going to be back-to-back. It's going to be, actually, if you take it all apart at the staple, it's going to be connected, because it'll be an eight and a half by eleven sheet, two-sided. So, it should look more like...
Gotcha. Okay.
This.
And then it folds over.
The printer actually recommended that we not fold it, that we send it as a flat, that it works better. The post office actually likes it better, because when you fold it, you have to have those little tab papers.
Sure.
And those sometimes stick in the machines. So, this way it actually mails better. So, that's why we've got all this reserved. But I think that this is simply going to say, whatever that is, mail delivery recipient or something like that. And we're not going to be labeling it. So, in theory, we probably could sneak up a little bit more if there's some other banner. If there's something that you think we've missed for this first issue that should've been in there, do let me know.
Very, very good.
Outstanding, Dropka.
I will pass that on to Andy, who did the layout. I did the content and he did the layout, so.
He has a hidden talent. It's beautiful.
Well, he knows how to use resources. There are templates out there and he's modified those and worked with them and was conscious of our typical colors that we use and was able to, you know...
So, he did this, or did the Grasso do this?
He did.
So, we didn't use Grasso?
We haven't used Grasso for the layout at all. That they would be the printers and the mailers.
So, then the quote came down then, right?
No, well, actually, that was, that...
Or the mailing.
Yeah. The mailing is still gonna be there.
Oh, okay, but he didn't design anything on it?
I mean, they, when we turn, we haven't given this to Grasso yet. When do we give it to them? They may say, "Oh, gosh, you need to spread this." They may have to make adjustments and all, so.
Sure, sure.
And they may have some, right.
Yeah.
Right. And, you know, they may say, "Ooh, that's not gonna work," or, you know.
Well, this is a good start.
I think it's excellent. Thank you. So, I will, I'll pass that along.
The only, I only had two other things on this. On the, on this last page with the dates, the township services and programs. It just looks a little busy, lots of words. I mean, maybe could we bold the times and the dates so it sticks out more? You know, eleven to one on the first Monday, you know, bold and, you know what I mean? Stuff like, just so that it sticks out.
Okay, make more things pop there?
Yeah. 'Cause just because it's just so busy, you know what I mean? With a lot of stuff, so.
Right. Well, and we didn't, we almost dropped some of them and thought, "Well, we'll put some more of the services." But then we thought, "Well, instead of that, we wanted to list all the services and then in future ones, we'll feature them more and explain, you know. Maybe have a picture of some of the stuff in the nurse's closet and things like that."
Big check presentation.
Big honkin' check on the grants. You're right, you know. So, I will, I'll make a note of that, though, if we can highlight like the times and days that that's available. In most cases, it's pretty much the same, but I agree with you that there's some...
And I have one question. Mental health board's not listed in our services.
You're absolutely right. We need to, and that's one of those places where I think since we're not folding it, that fourth page should be in there. Is there anything in particular and how you would like it? Like Fran gave us the words, the language that we used in the information about property tax exemption?
Services. I would just, services for mental health needs can be provided by the township.
Okay. You don't wanna list the agencies that we work with or anything like that?
No, because those may all change.
Okay.
I was gonna say, maybe make that a focus of the next newsletter.
Okay, but we will add that.
Let's add that in there, though.
Right.
So that people know that it's a...
Instead of just being one line item, at some point, we'll...
Focus it, yeah. I agree with you.
And I apologize for not getting that in there.
And I have a comment.
I'm sorry?
I have a comment. Normally, our guest speakers are limited to five minutes.
Oh, okay.
So, that was what we had in place with the old boards. I don't know if we wanna continue that policy or...
What's it say?
Oh, okay. You mean, to put it down, may limit? Yeah, I just, I thought, I didn't wanna carve it in stone in case when we have a larger group, I think that we can make a decision on the fly. So, I think that, I actually intentionally didn't put the amount of time, because I'm thinking if at this meeting in November, we have a houseful, five minutes may be too much to give to each person.
Right, yeah.
And I think the policy even says that unless...
Five minutes.
Is it strictly five? Okay.
But, I mean, we, you know, we have the ability to change that and...
Right.
We can take a motion.
Frequently, our guest speaker, or I guess our visitors have taken more than five minutes.
Yeah. And we can reserve the right to limit that. So, I mean, what are your thoughts, the rest of you? Should I play five minutes or not?
No, I would agree with Mary Robb. I mean, Trustee Clark, I mean, we could just take, you know, at any given time before anything starts. I mean, we could take a mo, you know, I move that, you know, we limit speakers to two minutes today, you know?
If we have a houseful.
Right, right.
Yeah, we could do that on the...
Yeah, we would only do that then. But, I mean, I've seen other government, when I was on the village board in North Riverside, when we'd have a packed house over some very burning issue, we couldn't keep to our normal amount of time, you know? Okay. Well, thank you for your kind remarks about it. I will share those with Andy and I will, I will, we'll make some adjustments as you have suggested. And on to new business. Well, we already took care of A. B, you have information about Costco membership. We've talked about putting it on the agenda because, and just as a, just as a test. Now, I don't anticipate changing all our purchases to Costco by any means, but for example, we took a look at the roll paper towels that go into our equipment and I checked out what the cost was at Costco on a visit and then we checked with our vendor. And there was a substantial savings. There was probably...
At the Costco?
At Costco was cheaper, yeah. It was like, I wanna say it was about three dollars of roll difference, you know, when you went to the case price. So, obviously, we'd always make sure that we're shopping at the best. But if, if it is your pleasure or you approve us going forward, I will take care of that.
So, I'm, just because I'm not familiar with the Costco and how it works. So, in order to go there, you need the card?
Yes.
That's correct.
So, if, so if you go, like, if the township doesn't have a Costco card, but let's say Supervisor Wilt has a Costco card, you could buy stuff for the township?
And then get reimbursed.
So, it's like a credit card?
No, it's not a credit card.
It's a membership.
So, what I've done...
It's a membership.
Right. So, but here's the thing. So, for example, and actually, Marjorie has used her personal credit card when we've had, I don't know, annual meeting and we needed some trays of fruit or something like that and she's gone there. She's used her own card and then just turned in a bill. And we usually can do that on a petty cash or that. But what Costco requires is that the payment card, so for example, I could use my own personal card, but I couldn't charge it on the township card, because the payment card has to match, the person it's issued to has to match the membership card. The other thing is that I could, in applying for this, I could also file our tax exemption with them. And then anything that we purchase for the township would also not be charged tax. Whereas when I go or Marjorie goes and buys it on our own cards, there's no tax exemption. We're paying a tax on it, which on food is not a high tax, but on some other items, it could make a difference.
It still saves money.
Yeah, we could do a business. I'm a member of Costco. Do a business member on that, you know? I mean, I don't see us having to go and...
No, I don't think we need that.
To the executive.
I don't think so. I don't think our purchases, and we can always upgrade to a business if we were to have the kinds of... Usually that's if you're gonna be buying a lot and then you actually get some points back and then it can, it can be applied to your membership fee and so forth. I, yeah, I wasn't recommending it. We just gave it to you for your information that...
Well, with the business membership, I know my dad's got one with the Sam's Club, which is different, but it's the same concept. And you get your tax ID numbers, everything's registered. So, they've got it right on there.
Exactly.
That's why I would think that a business member would probably be our best way. But we're gonna take a look at that for next month.
Well, no, I mean, I was asked to check into it. So, you have the information? I was asked to put it on the agenda, so I have a motion?
I have a motion that we buy a sixty dollar business membership to Costco with the right to upgrade it if we need so.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to purchase a sixty dollar business membership with Costco. Any discussion? Then would you please call or roll for the vote?
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item is, just, we don't have to act on this tonight, because we still have a couple more meetings before the end of the year. But before the first of the year, we need to post our meetings for the coming year and also the dates that the township offices would be closed. It's pretty much the same as we've always done in terms of meeting dates. And we did verify with the toy organization, the dates of next year's meeting. And it will again be over our normal meeting date, so November is, takes that into consideration. All the others here are the second Tuesday. And then the dates are relatively the same. The only proposal that's different here is that for Christmas Eve, Christmas Eve falls on a Monday. I don't know how much is businesses gonna get done. If we open Monday, close Tuesday, open again Wednesday, I don't know. We asked the village if they planned to open and they weren't sure yet, but they thought if they probably, they hadn't addressed that yet, but they thought they'd probably be closed on that Monday. So, that's up to you. As I said, you can or you don't have to vote on this tonight. But this is just a proposal for your perusal. Or if there's any holidays that you don't think are appropriate to take, these are based on what was given this year.
Why don't we just go ahead and vote on this?
Yeah. I did have a question about election day, though. Eleven six, twenty eighteen?
And there is a, yeah, the, there's a note, the next page shows when the election days are...
I don't, I did, well, not necessarily the primary, but the general. I mean, do they, does the township normally close on a general election? No.
We're still open, but they're...
Right. Because the auditorium has polling place here.
Okay. I didn't know if they're normally...
I'm sorry?
So does this room, doesn't it?
Right, right, so.
I didn't know if they would normally...
So, there's no reason to close. Some people, you know, use that opportunity to do both village and township business.
Sure.
I make the motion that we set the dates for 2018 for our meetings and for town halls.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. And we have that old stove that was replaced by the former board from the kitchen. And that was done, I believe, nine or ten years ago, because I think I was still the clerk when they bought, when they decided to buy a new stove.
It was right after you left the office.
Oh, so it happened once...
Just a couple of months later.
Right, right. So it's, it was about eight and a half years ago at least that, uh, that, and the, the old stove. It's sitting in the stairwell, like in the, in a corner, uh, at the back stairwell. And it's been collecting dust there for all those years.
I was, I thought they'd have to, didn't they want to donate it to somebody or?
Well, here's the thing. I mean, after it's been sitting unused for eight years, I don't know that it even would be operable. The reason it was replaced at the time was that there was a fear that it might be dangerous because it required, well, you had to, it's not a stove that you keep a pilot on. So it always had to be started first. Yeah. And so at this point, I did contact the attorney and that's why you have this message here. Cause I said, what do we do now? I know that anytime, well, and at the time, the board was frozen about what to do about it because they didn't know if it had value. And if it did, and they were going to sell it, it, you can only sell property of the township at the annual meeting. And so that never came up there. But we really think it's just scrap metal at this point.
And that's, that's.
The attorney.
Disposal of it as garbage.
Okay, can I have a motion to that?
I make a motion that we dispose of the old stove as garbage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to dispose of the old stove as garbage. Is there, is there any discussion?
I do have one point. We could probably find a scrapper that would take it away.
And I will, because either we're going to wind up paying somebody to haul it away, but I think that there must be a metal scrapper that would be interested in that. Do you have some contacts? Great. I, please send us the information and we'll see what we can do for, uh, do with it. And, uh, very good. And maybe, maybe we can buy a deep freeze for the food pantry or something instead or a refrigerator. All right. Um, so, yeah, take a vote, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Uh, go, uh, in the spirit of getting rid of things, can we, uh, put on the agenda next month for the copy machine, which is located right next to the stove in the same stairwell?
Oh, is there, is there that equipment to you? I thought we already got rid of that with the.
I thought it was.
I thought it was still there.
I thought we.
I thought we got rid of it when we got rid of the.
I believe that was one of our first acts.
I'll double check, but I think we got rid of it when we got rid of the electronic equipment.
Okay, wow.
Yeah. But that was. Okay, if, I'll double check and if it's still there, we'll get rid of that too. Uh, well, I'll bring it to the board. Okay, um, re, please, if you are, so can I have a count? Who is going to the, uh, who's going to the TAC meeting on the nineteenth? I have Tim, Mike, Mary, Rob.
And guests for me.
And, okay.
But I'll pay for her.
And Tom, are you going?
I, I have to ask the boss.
Okay. Please let me know tomorrow so, or as soon as possible so that we can make that reservation. And in terms of the, uh, state conference, please, please, please fill out the form and fax it to me or drop it off, uh, tomorrow if possible because we want to make that, we want to send in one payment and get those all in. And if you are going, then please do, um, participate in their housing form. And you can do that online. It was really quick to do it online. And that way, when they get our registration by this Thursday, they will also consider the housing. Otherwise, I don't know if then they release the hotels. I don't know what it's going to look like then, so. All right. Um, so let us know immediately, if not sooner. And then you have the financial report from Torma. That's our insurer.
Uh, I did have a question. You attached, uh, the, um, policy on travel in there. Was there something that we need to take action?
No. I don't remember that we.
It was a leaflet. You just put it in the mailbox.
That policy we approved, I believe. That's the one where the supervisor gets.
Yeah, section two.
That's actually the predecessor, actually. The predecessor board approved it. So it may just be that you left it in there. Is that something that?
I got it in my mailbox.
This time?
In my mailbox also.
Oh, in the mailbox?
I didn't know.
Oh, you know what? That was in anticipation of the going to Sprint Field.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you needed to take action or something.
I'm sorry, yeah. I forgot that I had to put that in. That was just so that you, I thought it was in your binder. But yeah, that was just with the, um, reminder to register that that's what, how it's done. So we are on to the approval of warrants. And Tom, I filled out the warrant sheet. Would you be the one to make the motion this time?
I would be honored. Uh, so the approval of warrants, uh, trustee Luffer moves that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant of October tenth, two thousand and seventeen in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred, fifty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents as presented to this board this tenth day of October, two thousand and seventeen, seconded by trustee.
I'll make, I'll second it.
And will the clerk please take the vote on that?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Then I'd like, can I do all these warrants together?
Yes, those all go together. So you just list them.
So motion by trustee Luffer, seconded by trustee.
Well, you're not yet. Just, I move to.
I move.
To approve the following warrants.
The following warrants, the utility warrant at the amount of one thousand, fourteen dollars, sixty-one cents. The payroll warrant of October tenth in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred, fifty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. The health warrant of October tenth in the amount of one thousand, four hundred, eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Monthly filings in the amount of zero. The grants in the amount of six thousand, five hundred. The general assistance warrants in the amount of one thousand, six hundred, fifty dollars. The township radio players warrant in the amount of two hundred dollars. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of seven hundred, ninety dollars and forty-two cents. All of the above is presented to the board this tenth day of October, two thousand and seventeen.
So we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on the other warrants. And clerk Law will be taking the vote.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And that is all that we have on the agenda. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.